Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the first meeting of the new year, the January 4th meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And hi, Maureen, I see you there. How about if you give us a roll call?
Chairman McGee?
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord?
Here.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Mayor Protam and Secretary Bavacqua?
I'm council member now, but here.
Okay, excuse me. Commissioner Clark Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gosson?
Here.
Commissioner Hauser?
Here.
Commissioner King?
There.
Commissioner Stone?
Here.
Very good. Mr. Mayor is, are you still Mr. Mayor?
Last time I checked, but I don't know. Should I be worried about that?
Who is, who's the Mayor Protam now?
Nancy Salvia is the new Mayor Protam.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Mayor, to kick off the new year, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. Before we begin, I just want to speak, this is generally for the benefit of the public who might be watching, but this is a virtual meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And virtual meetings will continue now into the future until the COVID thing is more under control. But in any event, you'll notice at the bottom of the screen, those of you who are watching on community television, our telephone number, and if you have input into any of the items on the agenda tonight, feel free to call that number and you'll get Sienna, you'll see her there up at the top of the screen. And she will hook you in at the appropriate time, so you'll be able to make comments to us about whatever it is that's on your mind. So the other thing I want to point out, any action taken by the Planning Commission under these COVID virtual laws counts. Our votes do have immediate effect, just as though we're immediate in person. Public comment, Sienna, do you have any public comment written or electronic for us?
I have not received anything.
Okay. I want to take just a moment here before we begin the agenda and bring up the memory of Sue Douglas, who passed away in late December. Those of you who have been on the Planning Commission for any period of time know Sue quite well. Frankly, until about six months ago, she was a pretty regular fixture at the Planning Commission, and Mr. Mayor, I suspect, at City Council as well. She was a lifelong resident of Rochester and had quite a political career. She started on, I think, on this Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, and then was on the City Council for some time and then eventually became the Oakland County Commissioner for this district for quite a period of time, and she's been retired for quite some time, lived on North Main Street, I think next door to the house she was born in. And really was a good example of, you know, caring about your community and getting involved. And she definitely kept a whole bunch of us up here on our toes. You never knew what was coming. So I just want to honor Sue's memory and we'll move on from there. Mr. Chair? Yes, yes. Just, just to, I want to make sure that's out there, she went by Sue Ann. Sue Ann Douglas, yeah. She was, she was quite a lady. We're going to miss her. Okay, the next item, number four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7. I asked the Commissioners if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes and ask if you have any changes, additions, deletions to propose, and if none, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. So it's been moved by the mayor, and who supports?
Support.
Mr. Stone supports. And any other discussion on this motion? The roll call, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yeah.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item number five, this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight for consideration of a site plan to renovate the existing U.S. Scuba Center building for Chief Financial Credit Union and add a drive-up ATM and relocate the current branch activities in their administrative building located at 515 South Rochester Road. Vidia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I will go over a refresher of this project because it's been over a month since you last had this before you. We have requested, proposed, we have reviewed a request from Chief Financial Credit Union to relocate their bank headquarters from 200 diversion street to 515 South Rochester Street. The site has an area of approximately 1.24 acres, is on the east side of Rochester Road, just before the bridge into downtown. I'm going to share my screen so then I'll see the site plan. Okay. The site is located within two municipal jurisdictions, the northern half being within the city of Rochester, you can see the line dividing it, and the southern half is in the city of Rochester Hills. The portion in the city of Rochester is Zoned B1, general business district, while that in the city of Rochester Hills is Zoned B2, commercial, and then F B3, which is flexible business overlay district, zoning on it at Rochester Hills. The site is currently occupied by a one-story 7,425 square foot building. The applicant's proposal is to use it as a main bank office, add covered drive-through structure on the east side of the building, and exterior patio on the north side of the building. Banks with drive-through facilities are permitted by Ripe in the B district. The applicant also owns adjacent property, which is 200 diversion, and intends to maintain ownership of that building too, to continue their administrative offices in there. The applicant was previously asked about coordinating approvals between both municipalities. It is my understanding that they appeared before the Rochester Hills Planning Commission for a public hearing on December 15th and received a recommendation or approval from that Planning Commission and are scheduled to appear before the Hills City Council on January 11th, which is a week and a half away to get approval of this project. With regard to access and regular circulation, there is a two-way access drive of Rochester Road. The entire site is mostly designed for two-way movement of vehicles, except for the drive-through area, which is one-way circulation, the new access drive that connects with an existing access drive and onto diversion, South Street. I believe Nick corrected me last time, the street changed its name, so at this point it becomes South Street. There is a sign being added by the applicant as we had requested to say do not enter, just to prevent anybody from coming in the wrong way access drive when they are exiting from the site. The site has a significant slope right from here down till about South Street, and the applicant has provided engineering drawings, which shows that the slope will be engineered so that vehicles can stack up over here without any issue. This is going to be a shared access drive. Although both properties are owned by Chief Financial Credit Union, we do need to see a copy of a shared access agreement in perpetuity that is going to be recorded with the property. That needs to be submitted for review by the city attorney. With regard to pedestrian circulation, site fronts onto Rochester Road, there is an existing public sidewalk. A new sidewalk is proposed along the Rochester Hills frontage. The applicant is also proposing a sidewalk connection between 200 diversion and this property. There was some concern regarding the sidewalk actually crossing over onto the drive-through area itself. The applicant has clarified that this sidewalk is strictly for use by employees only if and as needed. 200 diversion is at a lower level, so the steps would provide a connection to the sidewalk that's in front of the building. Our recommendation, however, is that a caution sign be added over here for drive-through vehicles to watch out for pedestrians on the sidewalk. It's frequently done where a sidewalk crosses a drive-through aisle. We have a caution sign stating, watch out for pedestrians crossing ahead. So a sign such as that would be definitely helpful in ensuring pedestrian safety. With regard to parking, based on the ordinance standards, the site requires a total of 30 parking spaces and additional stacking spaces for the drive-through. Two stacking spaces per drive-through and two for the drive-up ATM. The site meets all of the requirements and they have provided the required stacking tube. The plan also proposes three handicap accessible spaces, which are ADA compliant. Loading space is shown on the north side of the building. The minimum dimension of the space has to be 10 feet by maybe 5 feet. The space is striped incorrectly, it's just a minor correction and just needs appropriately striped. The space must be made at least 25 feet, and that is something that can easily be corrected while striking. With regard to dumpster, there are existing dumpsters on 200 diversion, which are also to be shared with the site. Once again, like shared access, there has to be a shared dumpster agreement, which will also be recorded with the properties and must be submitted for city attorney's review. With regards to architecture, facade changes, I go to the facade change. The applicant is proposing, the existing facade is in pretty good condition, the building is constructed of brick, but the applicant is modernizing it a little bit and adding some enhancements, namely in the form of a glass atrium. The height still needs the maximum permitted for the B1 district. The applicant is also proposing suspended metal awnings or overhangs at the entrances to the building, which give the building some depth. Currently, it's directly, the windows are facing, the addition of the awning enhances the facade. The addition of a patio on the north side is intended to take advantage of the sweeping views of the bridge just north of the site. We believe the proposed improvements do enhance the building. The applicant has submitted a three-dimensional rendering, which is included in your packet. We had suggested that they build, they present building material colors and samples to you to make. It's a little difficult in a virtual meeting, but if they have the samples, if they could just hold them up for the planning commission to get an idea of what is being proposed, that would be helpful. With regard to lighting, there is a photometric plan for the site. All of the poles are a maximum of 20 feet of base to the top of the fixture, downward directed and shielded as required by the ordinance. Landscaping, the applicant has proposed a pretty extensive landscape plan for the site. It includes foundation planting enhancements, enhancements along the front and along the east side of the drive-through area also. There are several tree shrubs and ornamental plantings proposed. All of them do meet the minimum size requirements of the ordinance. Landscaping is to be provided with automatic irrigation and maintenance. This site does have a few trees. Based on the applicant's survey, the site has a total of 11 trees, of which nine are regulated. Seven of these are located within the city of Rochester and require replacement. Because we do not have extensive landscaping requirements for the B1 district per se, most of the trees that you see on here are intended towards the replacement requirements of the ordinance. There are no landmark trees on the site based on a review of the tree survey. The site has an existing monument sign along its frontage, which the applicant plans to resurface and reuse. The sign is over here. The city administration will verify the sign for compliance with the area standards prior to it being resurfaced. And finally, one of the questions that came up at the previous meeting was the installation of roof-mounted generators or mechanical equipment and the fact that they would be seen as you're coming down the slope. The applicant at the last meeting wasn't sure how many units would be installed. At this time, the proposed plan does show the rooftop units, they are located mostly in this area and this area. So, and they are to be provided with standing metal screen. So units are not really going to be visible from Rochester Road direct frontage. They may be momentarily visible when you're coming down the slope of Rochester Road, but that is unavoidable unless you build a huge enclosure on top of the roof, which is not the intent of rooftop screening. But the proposed units are being placed in a manner that will minimize your appearance on the street. The applicant has revised the plans twice so far to comply with literally all of the issues of concern that were expressed by us and the Planning Commission. It's our recommendation at this time that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for Chief Financial Credit Union located at 515 South Rochester Road, subject to the following four conditions: copy of a shared access placement and shared dumpster use agreement in recordable form with the adjacent property, which is 200 diversion, addition of a caution sign in the drive-through lane for pedestrian safety, restriping of the loading space in compliance with ordinance standards, and finally, review and approval of any proposed signage by the city staff. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd ask the Commissioners if you have any questions of the planner. Okay, is the representative from the credit union here?
Yes, how are you? I'm Tom Delison.
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing good.
The floor is yours. Is there anything you would like to add to the comments from the planner?
No, we have our architect on the line as well. If there are any specific questions to him. But you are right, we did have the meeting with the city of Rochester Hills and they, you know, they had a few questions, but for the most part, you know, they were okay with moving forward with it, so. Or I'll just make a commentary, we're very excited about the project, for sure.
I can imagine, I can imagine. So Vidia, just to reiterate, the Rochester Hills Planning Commission has approved, it goes to City Council now?
Yes. In Rochester Hills, it is special land use, I believe, so they need to go before City Council for final approval.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for the petitioner here tonight? Well, it's a pretty straightforward design.
This is David Gaston.
Hi, David.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question, maybe a little description of the effort to screen the mechanical unit and the obstacles at which you were found that maybe caused you not to put some screening to do it, to visually block them? Then how big are those units?
So this is Rob Clark, I'm the architect for the project with TBI Design Professionals. I'll try to answer that question for you as quickly as I can. The units are three seven-ton units, the physical dimensions of which I don't have right offhand, but they're fairly good-sized units. We were, our intention is to screen those with a metal screening detail around the perimeter of those, that's a good description, or a good shot of those there. And that's generally where they would be placed. We don't anticipate running into any real difficulty with screening those. We've got to increase the structure for the units themselves, and that will allow us to be able to accommodate the screening detailing.
David, does that answer your question?
It does very clearly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, go ahead, Christian.
Uh, this is Eric.
Oh, sorry, Eric.
That's okay. The retaining wall along the north side of the property there, it looks like it's pretty sizable, 10, 12 feet, something like that. Just curious what the face material is going to be for that wall, because it'll probably be visible as you're coming across the the bridge and certainly down on First Street.
The, we have two alternatives that we're exploring right at the moment in order to resolve that. The most likely is a landscape wall, a stacked landscape wall that is incremental as it steps back, so it steps back at a slight taper and is a decorative face to it.
Would that be a block wall or a poured?
Yes. Ideally, that's what we are pushing towards, is a, is a systems approach that is a block characteristic. If we, there is some concern that at the very north end, as you point out, it's a very tall wall, and depending upon what the engineering looks like that, we might have to go back to a poured concrete wall, which if we have to do that, then we'd be using a brick veneer that matches the building.
Okay.
Okay with that, Eric?
Yeah, as long as that's how that ends up getting, you know, being constructed, and I think it's important to be conscious of the face material of that wall.
Vidia, should that be a condition, an additional condition here?
I would definitely include it. If it's an issue of concern, then I think it's important to include it as one of your conditions, that the outer surface of the retaining wall needs to be decorative, depending upon eventual engineering, what is decided on the wall height.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:20, and I'll ask Sienna if she has anyone waiting to speak from the public on this matter.
I do not.
Okay. So that was pretty easy. We'll close the public hearing at 7:21 and consider it held. And we'll move this back up to the Commissioners. I had a quick question for the attorney. Because this falls into two jurisdictions. Jeff, I think I saw, yeah, there you are.
Well.
Should there be a condition also that it's subject to approval by the city of Rochester Hills? I hate to have a half, just in the event something occurs.
No, no, I think that's fair. I think both, I think the applicant knows that they have to get both, so it's not a, that's not a big ask. I think that's, I think that's well stated.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion from the Commissioners? And would anyone care to try a motion?
I'll give it a shot. I'll make a motion to grant site plan, recommend site plan approval of the Chief Financial Credit Union in accordance with McKenna's, the four conditions laid out in McKenna's letter of December 21st, 2020, and additionally, with the condition that the north retaining wall be provided or constructed with a decorative face along the north retaining wall, and secondly, subject to approval by Rochester Hills of the site plan.
And your motion is to grant approval?
Correct, yeah.
Very good.
I support that, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Gaston supports that, so we have a motion that's been supported and moved, and if there's no other discussion, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Lord?
Yes.
Gosson? Gosson?
David, you want to wait?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hauser?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much. David, you're doing pretty well with your phone there tonight. It's just one of those things, when you're our age and have these little techie devices that we have to depend on.
I agree, thank you.
Okay, item number six, consideration of amendments, revisions to the originally approved site plan for facade renovations for the Gateway Center located at 103 125 South Main Street. Vidia, would you handle on this one?
This is actually Nick.
Okay. I am available here. Happy New Year to the Planning Commission. Congratulations to our listeners at the credit union, Tom, good job, you fought the good fight. We're looking forward to seeing that development. You've got, you guys did a great job, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate that.
All right, so back on August 5th, 2019, Commission, we remember after multiple meetings, we worked with the new owners of our Gateway Center and with design, the folks at the design team, Design House, to work on a facade renovation of the existing center, and we went back and forth and back and forth. And we ultimately came up with a plan that was approved. The owners took their time, did due diligence. Obviously, COVID hit, put a snag in some things, and finally, last fall, they were able to secure the contractors, the things they needed to do to get going on the renovation of the center, which we are excited about. So much that we actually did not put big bright lights on the facade so that they could work through the winter, do this. So unlike, not unlike a couple of other projects lately, as they got into the structure, if you remember, they're going to make it a kind of a modern-looking building, and then after work with the architects, the owners, the historic, the historic folks, we came back with a renovation of removing the old facade, unveiling what was underneath the building, the old brick facade from the Yates Machine Shop. And we appreciate that the owners of the center decided to go that route and reworked that facade, add the top part, the metal part on the top that would screen the utilities, et cetera, et cetera. We had a approved a mural on the side of the building, and part of that approval, you remember where there, they weren't the original columns on the north and south end of the building, but they were stone. Some of you liked it, some of you didn't like it, but ultimately it was approved with the existing caps left there. And to see what would happen, well, when they got into those caps, being that it's so old, it was not a pretty picture, so they came in, said, hey, we're going to have to take this apart. If the Planning Commission wants us to put fake stone back on, we will, but we've got some other ideas. We'd like to bring our architects back, present to the Commission, which we're going to do in a few moments, to see if a facade renovation change would be appropriate and approved by this body. So I know, Ari, I know you're here, and I think some of your teammates are here to talk about what you guys want to do. There's a presentation that Sienna put in the packet that if they want to walk us through, and we could make this, I'm going to call it a minor renovation, a minor modification to the property proposed, not make anything bigger, smaller, it's, it's just a change of materials based on what they found in the deconstruction of this building, so.
Absolutely.
If you want to.
Sure, yeah. What we would be looking for then is strictly a motion from the Planning Commission to allow this change to the already-approved site plan.
That's correct, just like we did for BP.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
So the representatives from Gateway, the floor is yours. Would you please take us through what your intention is?
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, in a perfect world, we would be able to recover the face of that wall with brick, but.
Ari, could you introduce yourself so they know who you guys are?
Sure. I'm Ari Caesar, this is my mother, Pam Becker, we're the owners of Gateway Center.
And I'm actually Arnold Becker's daughter.
We remember you when you came in last year, and welcome again.
And Ari is my son, so it's all in the family.
Keeping it in the family. So in a, in a perfect world, we'd love to, to to cover, I mean, to stick to the plan and, you know, use a stone or a brick on the side of this wall, you know, unfortunately, that, that wall was leaning and it the stone needed to be taken off and with what it would cost to hire a mason to replace that, where we weren't necessarily a fan of the aesthetic of that stone in the first place. It's kind of cost prohibitive. Additionally, there's not a footing underneath that wall where we could brick up above it. So, so masonry is kind of out of the picture here, so we're looking at options that would essentially go on top of the wall. Nick, I don't know if
Sienna, if Sienna can share the packet? Are you architects?
Yeah, if you're, they did contact me today from Design House. If you guys want to go ahead and share your screen, you can do so at this time.
My name is Gil. Hi, I'm Gil from Design House. And we are working with Ari for the Gateway Center. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. I'm going to be showing on the screen and sharing it with you. Can everyone see that?
Not yet. Okay.
Yep.
It's muted out. Is there a way to?
We can see it.
And at the moment, there's no way of accentuating the colors of it. We just to sub- We just to subdue the colors just for the rendering of itself. As the project itself is just to be a subdued siding to it. It was a sort of a homage, as you would, to how it's actually going to be looking on the side of the building, just nice and quiet.
So what is this material?
So this material here is a fibrous cement board, which you get from a company. Most times it's like the company Hardy, you hear the term Hardy board.
Yeah.
And so this material here is very resistant to the weather conditions that would actually be there. So that's why with a stone cladding that was there before, it's also looking at something that would be resilient to those type of conditions as well as creating a nice aesthetic view for Rochester. Also with the, the bank credit union looking to be modernizing that area as well. It would be a good step for a simple idea, the side of the building to be a modernized step. And if you, we go through, we see that the brickwork itself comes from the actual Yates building itself. So all this brickwork has now been exposed when the mansard was taken off the front. That's why when you go back to the actual image of it, you see on the front here, all that brickwork is the original from Yates. And the siding here of the Hardy board would only got to the side of where the parapet is actually existing. So it wouldn't be going any higher. It's, it simply is changing material because structurally it's unsound to put the stone back in. There's no footing there to be able to put brickwork. And it's just asking that a footing be put on and a new material to be able to try and modernize. But at the same time, keep it classic for the city of Rochester for that, that view.
How is the Hardy board attached to that wall?
You have a footing system. So the footing itself, if you just think of your studs.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So basically you just put a stud wall on and the Hardy board goes across and.
By adhesive, by adhesive or fastener?
Fasteners for inside for the Hardy board, but you can have an adhesive for the side and that'll make it sealed from the weather conditions.
Okay. Okay, any questions for this gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few. This is David.
Go ahead, Dave.
The material to the left of this proposed Hardy board wall, what is that? Is that a new surface? I'm, I'm not remembering from our previous.
No, so that's, that's existing material from the Yates building, the brickwork.
On the left as well as frontage on Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Gil, Gil, I want to, I, I'll chime in just to correct you. On the, the brick, yeah, on the south side. So on the left side there, that was actually block and, and it ended about where the, the height of the canopies begins. So that's all new brick that's going in there. We did our best to match the, the, the brick on the east face. The brick on the east face is all original and everything below the canopies is, is original, but this is above the canopy on the, that south face, left side, that's all new brick that's going in.
And just to clarify, thank you for that explanation, but below the canopy is painted block. Is that right?
Painted brick.
Painted brick below the canopy.
Yes.
All right. I appreciate, I've been watching, if I could continue, Mr. Chairman, with a couple.
Please do. Yes.
I've been watching the effort over the last, say, six weeks or so, or some period of time and appreciate the efforts to restore what's there, the, you know, the masonry. But particularly to what you're asking tonight, I was not a fan of the, the, the stone when the first proposal came through. I thought it was a mistake to try to leave it, considering the magnitude of the improvements you were doing to the building. And primarily because it didn't fit. This change does away with what I didn't like before as a building on Main Street, considering a significant enhancement project. This, however, doesn't, doesn't fit still like the other stone material, in my opinion. I think there are some alternatives that maybe you've looked at and you decided this is your best option. I don't think it's a good option for, call it the gateway, and it truly is a gateway into the city. It's not the right material. It might be used somewhere else on buildings on Main Street. I just don't think it's setting the bar or the standard for new development on Main Street as an appropriate product for a Main Street finished material. I would be more open to, and his opinion, I'd be more open to an Ephesus material, even though it's not something I would normally suggest, but it's more fitting with the other materials that you're already using on the, the building improvement. It kind of goes along with the masonry and the metal panel. The Hardy blank is, it doesn't fit, in my opinion. That's.
If you may say, it wouldn't just be a Hardy plank. It actually has a wood texture that you can see here from the Silver Beach type effect. Therefore, it create a natural rustic appeal to tie in with the city of Rochester, which already has a nice homely, small town feel to it. So as, and therefore the wood effect on the side itself was to address that concern that it would just be a flat image. And it's only because of rendering itself that it's hard to actually see just how well that actually looks when it's seen.
And it can be done in different colors as well.
And it can be done either horizontal or vertical. So it does have the texture and the feel and the look of wood.
It just had the resilience of cement, but you would never be able to tell that it's actually a cement based product.
I, I totally get the point and I can appreciate it. Again, I don't think, as I'm seeing it now, even in your material board, it looks foreign to what we're seeing on Main. It would probably be great for more of a, I'll call it a residential type structure. I, I would suggest, you know, the limestone you already have, it's the top left there. There's Ephesus material, it's a synthetic plaster looking material and I, and it's not a material I think we support generally, or I, but I think it would be more fitting. I think it goes in contrast to what everything else modern you're doing on the building. And as a gateway, not just because it's the namesake of your building, it truly is a gateway into the city. And I, I think it's setting the wrong tone for not just this building, but anybody else that wants to develop down Main Street.
David, I don't, I'm not familiar with what the material is you're suggesting.
Well, I'm not really strongly suggesting it, Mr. Chairman. I'm just saying, you know, off, off my hip as I'm looking at it, it's a good alternative and it looks just like the material called limestone in the top left.
Okay.
Synthetic, but it looks just like that. And I'm not a fan of it. I just don't, I'm just really opposed to putting a wood looking material, even though it's got a lot of good qualities to it in terms of durability. I just don't think it's the right material for Main Street, particularly to the other elements of improvements they're doing on this building, which is really, I mean, it was, it was presented as though it's a modernization, harkening back to some of the existing original materials. And that's, that's why I remember it. And I think this is departing from that.
So you'd be opposed to any fiber cement, no matter what it looks like, whether it looks like wood or.
Well, that's an interesting question. I would say no is my answer. I, I've seen this cement fiber board that comes in panels, large format, eight feet, 10 feet, by about four or five feet. So more modular, less like siding.
Hey, Gil, can I?
It might be a scheme that looks like that.
Again, please, Ari.
Could I hijack the, the screen for a second? So.
Yes, sir.
They shared a lot of drawings for me and I, I, I realized that we had one, you know, that we were going to share, but I just, just in, in understanding Mr. Gassen's concerns, I want to see if this is what. And so I don't know if this even requires a footing, right? But this is, this is kind of.
But just it's the.
Is this what you're talking about when you're talking about like an Ephesus like kind of panel?
Well, you, that's awesome. I don't know what that is, but that looks pretty awesome.
So I mean, our, our only concern, our only concern is if this is something that requires the, a footing, you know, it's going to be extremely costly to dig, dig everything up to build that. So I mean, I have to get with, with, with my team to understand what it would take to construct like this, but.
If I can jump in real quick, this is Joe with Design House.
Go ahead.
So that image is a, the Hardy panel, the wood, wood grained Hardy pane, or Hardy plank at a forty-five, and then that dark gray trim would be a stippled Hardy panel, which is what Mr. Gassen was talking about, comes in the four by eight, 10, 12 foot things. And then there would be a trim that separates that Hardy panel from that wood grained plank to create that kind of border. It's an easy, it's the products have easy trim with the trim system specifically created for fiber cement board. So these color, you know, this colorway does fit in more with the, with the kind of brick colors that are currently out there and ties into the, you know, the gray metal accent and the signage being we have going around the top. So it's similar materials used in a different way to kind of give a different look.
Now you would, you would do this at each end of the building where the stone is removed.
Correct.
David, let me see if I can get some of the other commissioners to jump in here and react to this.
Derek here. I guess I'm a little bit confused because what's in my packet, I was given an eleven by seventeen set of drawings. And what I'm looking at is neither one of the two options we've seen so far. It's, it's the one I'm looking at. It's a brick, yeah, it's a brick, you know, ba- basically a sidewall brick with some, you know, angles to the, you know, brick to give it some, some accent, but.
I don't know how, I don't know how you guys ended up with that image, but that was, that was, that was what we initially wanted to do. It just required digging up the, the, the footing and was cost prohibitive.
So, okay, I, I understand that. I guess my opinion is, you know, I, I agree with what Mr. Gassen had said. I think the, what was originally shown to us, to me seems like it, it doesn't fit. And, and looking at this, I, I can't say that I feel much differently with what I'm seeing here. I think it's better. And this is just my opinion, right? But I think it's better. But when I look at it, how it's fitting in with the surround, it just, it still seems to, to stand out a bit to me. So I wonder if there are some other options to consider. And it's, it sounds like the issue that you have is you're, you're trying to, okay.
There's plenty of options. It's just, you know, these are pictures and there's not a tremendous amount of consideration for what, what each one of these things are going to cost to do. So.
Yeah.
How about that one there? The brick one?
Yeah. So Joe, Joe, do you want to address whether this is a, a panel system or what, what this is? My, my, my goal is, my, my, just, just to be completely candid, this is, this is a kind of a linchpin for the contractors. I need to make sure that we can get a resolution for, for this thing so that it doesn't drag other parts of this project.
Yeah, which I get.
I want to avoid having to have this go back to another meeting.
Right. I understand. I, I think the challenge you have, it sounds like is it's a, it's a cost item relative to footings and the need to support this thing. That's really the main driver. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, if, if you want, number one, if you want real brick, that's, that's a cost item. And then number two, the issue with brick as well is this right here is original brick to the original building. This is new brick that we're putting on to try and match this brick. This brick right now is currently gray and is going to be painted. So if you have one, two, three, and now four different brick textures, it's going to look wonky. So.
Yeah. The, the trick with this whole thing is, yeah, to not put the new brick next to the old brick and have it.
Yes.
Have this contrast of two different bricks. So we wanted to try to get some sort of different material to transition from the bricks. So it's not as.
That's the one.
That they don't match, yeah.
Patty, I see your hand up. How about?
Now, I, first of all, it's, it's a fan, I did not have the opportunity to see what you had previously proposed, because I've only been on for a year. And I do want to say that it's a tremendous improvement on what currently exists. And thank you for taking on this project. I think my feelings I share with Commissioner Lord and Commissioner Gassen is that I don't feel that it, it fits with the context of the environment that we, that it's already set. And maybe, and, and I don't know, these awnings, if, if, it feels like this type of style with the, with the awnings, regardless of, of what the, that, that facade is. I feel like it's just a bit of a, we see that in every other city and I don't feel it's keeping with the character of our downtown, especially given that it's Gateway. And so I'm wondering, you know, everyone else has a different on, they have awnings as opposed to.
It's funny you should mention that. That's, that's, that's probably going to go before you in another meeting because
Okay.
the awnings came back at, the, the, the number gives me a migraine thinking about it. I have, I have a, a vendor right now coming up with some sketches. And so, you know, that's going to be the last piece of the puzzle. We are looking at, at more fabric like options for that.
So I think that's throwing it off much more for me than, I do prefer this view that we see right now as far as where the, the sign of the Gateway Center is. I think that's an attractive option.
Vidya? Vidya?
I'd like to confuse the issue, but I just wanted to note that when approval was granted by the planning commission for this project on August fifth, twenty nineteen, one of the conditions was consideration being given to the addition of a historic placard on the building wall, possibly in collaboration with the DDA or the historical committee. And I think when that was being discussed, it was this accent wall there, that historic placard and you know, the details about why this building is historically so special was about to go in there. I think that was the discussion at the time. So I want to make sure no matter what eventually the planning commission approves for this area, that, that is still kept in the back of your mind, that the historic placard was one of the things recommended for the wall, just so it doesn't get lost.
So that's, that's a great, a, a, a great, great suggestion, great recollection. So I think one of the things that we had thought about was the Rochester Historical Society found some really cool newspaper article prints from when the Yates Machine Shop had announced that they were opening. And I thought that that might be cool to put on the north side of the building so that, you know, as folks are walking from that FedEx Kinko's area towards us, you know, on, on that otherwise kind of dull, just block wall, we could blow up the old news article and that might be, you know, interesting there.
That would definitely, you know, given the history of the Yates building, that would be a great addition, but.
Thank you for recalling that. We appreciate that.
You're planning to probably change the awnings. It would just be my suggestion. I mean, the board, the commission will give you direction. If you're going to change the awnings, it makes sense that maybe one of the things that you're proposing at this time for the end wall will actually tie in better with fabric awnings than the metal awning right now does. Maybe you want to take a step back, get all your bids in, decide what works best for a cost, because it's a complete package. Or two different pieces might not work, but maybe when you change it to fabric, one of the options that is you're suggesting for the end might look better with that. The planning commission will be able to see the picture better, is my thought.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, the building is in pieces right now and I have people that are trying to get work done and I don't have. I, yeah, we, the, I have, right now there's, you know, I have issues with exposed, you know, openings in the. exposed, you know, openings in the, the, the building right now. I mean, I need to, I need to get this thing wrapped up so that my tenants can, can get back to business, um, and my contractors can get, can get moving.
I'd like to hear from, uh, a few more of the commissioners for your reaction, if you don't mind. Um, I think it's worth this, uh, letting us know what you think. So they can go away tonight with a, a clear understanding of what we're looking.
Mr. Chairperson, Christian Houser?
Christian, please.
How are you? Okay. So I'm a newer member as well, and I don't have the ability to go back and see what was initially proposed, but I can tell you from a personal level, I think anything would have been better than the stone that was there initially. So I think I side with some of the other members that, um, we'll, we'll figure something out to make it work. Um, the picture that again is in the drawings that we received is a little bit different than what's present on the screen. But I, I kind of like what's there now. Um, yeah, that's what's in our packet, but the, the picture just above it. Um, I think to me is a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and, and I, the issue I think that was presented is if that's brick, you've got a lot of different brick features and it almost becomes monolithic. You have this big monolithic brick wall there that kind of stares you right in the face when you come into town and listen, it's a brick wall. And I think something like this adds a little accent. It adds a little, um, you know, distinction from what you have already in place and it makes the transition from the old brick to the new brick, to the painted brick, a little bit softer. So to the extent that you're able to make this work or something very similar to that work, um, I would certainly probably be in, well, I would be in favor of that versus just a, um, a, a solid brick wall, whether it's the thin brick veneer or a solid, you know, a, a regular course of brick.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, are you there?
I got a point.
Yeah, I'm here.
Sarah, go ahead and give us your two cents.
Well, I also wasn't a part of this when it initially was approved. Um, wasn't a huge fan of the stone. I didn't know this project was actually really going on. I saw some stuff the other day, but I'm really excited about it. I think this looks great overall. I actually happen to like the overhangs. Um, I like the more modern look. But, um, I, what's on the screen right now, I mean, I, I think it looks fine. My, I mean, personally, what I would love to see is like a, um, a, a more modern looking stone facade, but I understand that, you know, the structure won't support something like that. I think this is significantly an improvement over what was there. And, you know, I, I could live with something like this.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. I mean, this, uh, you know, I also was not on the planning commission that we stipulate, we all have to stipulate that, I guess. Even though I don't think that matters one way or the other. Um, I think it is an improvement. I mean, of course. Uh, but I, I, I guess I, and, and one, I guess seeing something here that wasn't in our packet is, you know, typically not good policy. Um, I guess I, I agree more with, uh, Mr. Gasson and Mr. Lord where, um, I, you know, that just doesn't have a good feel toward. And again, that's my opinion. Um, so, you know, the, the screen lower or something, I, I probably prefer more. Um, so I, you know, I, I understand there's issues, but, you know, I'd like to see something different there as well.
Are you talking about what's on the screen right now? You don't care for or the wood, the wood that we started with?
Well, the, the, the one we originally started with.
The, the, uh, hardy board looked like planks. Yeah, got it. How about this one right here?
Yeah. Uh, I, I mean, maybe I'm old fashioned, but I guess the brick wall doesn't do as much for me as it does for other people.
Yeah.
Um, you know, to me it looks, you know, it, it looks like they ju, it just got put up there. Again, that's my opinion only, but that's my opinion. So I would probably not be in favor of this.
Not in favor of this one right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Dean and Matt, how about, how about you guys?
Yeah, this is what he's seeing on the screen.
Are we all seeing on the screen the, the black backing with the wood framed at an angle in the gateway center?
Yes. Yeah, dark, a dark border and a forty-five degree angle brickwork.
Yeah.
Uh,
That's not brickwork though, right? That's the hardy on an angle, the cement fiber board?
Hardy, yes.
Dennis, this is Matt Stone. Um, you know, I, I would a- agree in general with what has been said. Uh, I appreciate the o, building owner's effort to improve the look, everything here. Uh, I'm, I'm just confused as to why we're trying to help them design it. Uh, it should have been brought to us with one solid rendering.
The correct one.
Correct. The correct awnings. We should have done this one time. You know, you and I have already looked at this. Um, whatever material the owner and architect decide to use on the south end of the building, which we are staring at on our screens, I would just hope that they're mindful of like fading from the sun and weathering effects. Uh, as this side of the building will take a pounding compared to the north side. Um, I would not want to see this put up whatever material they're using. And in two years it's faded and looks horrible. You know, as, as bad as the, the stone facade looked, it, it stood the test of time for thirty or forty years, however many years that was up there. And probably faded very little. One, one thing I'd like to ask, could you put a precast panel uh, that then gets painted with that darker red color that you were painting the lower, uh, Rochester Road Street base brick? So that color red would wrap around and instead of having four colors, you only have three colors of brick. I don't know if you have a, you know, sixth or eighth rendering to show us what that would look like. Uh, but perhaps it could be considered.
Thank you. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Stone. Um, it's a planning commission. It's not a design commission. Um, yeah, you know, it sounds as if there's going to be another return, uh, to planning commission to change the awnings. Um, so we're trying to make design suggestions based on, uh, a facade that is going to change drastically when cloth is going to be done instead of these, these, uh, uh, metal awnings. Um, you know, it's, it's all in construction right now. And I understand that, that things, you know, happen during construction, but um, the awnings are going to change, these end caps are going to change. Um, I, I don't really have any suggestions on it. It's, I, I'm not an architect and it's not my job, but, um.
Nick, I wonder if you could, uh, jump back in here again and, uh, um, I mean, obviously we'll do everything we can to get these folks back in as soon as possible. It's, it's the first I've heard. Like to see the, uh, you know, the new uh, canopy design along with these end caps. At the same time. Not to be rude, but this ball keeps moving. Ari, you guys, nobody ever mentioned changing awnings. I, if you would have said that to us, I would have said you're not going to go in front of the planning commission and to bring a complete package together because the, uh, Commissioner, uh, Vak was correct. We're not a design group. It's your building. You should bring in your best shot at what you think it should look like based on the conversation we approved this time. Tying all the historic preservation, why not take the face brick that's on the south side? Just wrap it all the way to the corner. If you're going to paint it anyway, what does it matter? So I, I, I love the mural idea. Murals on both ends can be spectacular, but I'm not architect and you don't, you're not supposed to come back here three or four times.
Listen, I, I appreciate the feedback, you know, when I went into this, uh, and, and, and this is the design, you know, the, the canopies are approved and it's still my intention to, to go about it, but I had no idea that they were going to come back as expensive as they were. So, um, you know, it's, I'm, I'm doing my best to give you guys options that you like as well as not, you know, I, I'm not in the business of, 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 of blowing as much money as possible. I'm doing my best to, to really upgrade this. This has been you know, a, a cost of fortune and I'm, I'm asking you guys for a little compassion here.
Eric, Ari, you, I assure you, we are pulling in the same direction that you are. And I think you ought to come back at the next meeting in January, if we can fit you in with all of this, both the final canopies and the final end caps. And, you know, I think you got enough reaction tonight. I mean, the gray on this brick didn't fly that first, that first thing. This here, however, it's finally assembled, at least the color scheme seems to work better. It does, you know, it doesn't stick out, but I don't think we can help you anymore tonight other than, I mean, every commissioner has spoken, the staff has spoken, and, uh, we'll get you back in here just as soon as we possibly can.
Sounds good. I mean, is there, uh, I, I would, the reason why you guys have seen a few drawings tonight, aside from the fact that the one that I presented somehow didn't end up in front of you, uh, is because I, you know, I don't know any better and I wanted to give you guys some, some things to get some feedback on what does.
I know. I, I appreciate having seen that whole array of design options. It, it's, it was, opened up my mind uh, significantly. And, uh, I suspect the others would say the same thing. So, but you're going to have to narrow it down, uh, get, get the canopy design settled and come back and see us and we'll get you over the line here.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments for these, these folks?
I just wanted to say thank you for your time from Design House and thank you to Mayor Bixson as well for giving us the time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. We'll see you in a few weeks, I hope.
Sure.
All right. Number seven. This is consideration of our, a request from A Condominium Management Incorporated for a site plan and special exception proposal for general office space in a non-conforming building located at four eleven Woodward Avenue. Uh, Vidya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Jason Carey on behalf of a condominium management Inc. To operate a real estate office, which is classified by our zoning ordinance as a professional office within an existing building. The site is located on the south side of Woodward Avenue, just west of Oak Street and is zone R one, which is one family residential district. Now, the site is occupied by an existing building that is currently vacant. For the applicant, the structure was previously occupied by a learning or a tutoring center. And before that, as, was used as a psychiatrist's office. Several other office uses have preceded the last known use of this property. Applicant is interested in portraing this property for use as a professional office. Uh, now, the applicant said that the last known use was a tutoring center and that was our understanding. Uh, I'm not aware of any psychiatric office being located in this building. That could be classified as a medical office use. In either case, both are non-conforming uses in the R one residential district and are not permitted. However, the commercial use is an existing non-conforming use. If the tutoring center is classified as a commercial use. Existing two-story structure that is on the site, um, it looks like a regular two-story dwelling. It is actually compliant with all of the setback requirements for the R one district. Now, the zoning ordinance, there is a section in the zoning ordinance that states, I quote, no structural operations are made. Any non-conforming use of a structure or structure at premises may as a special exception, we change to another non-conforming use. Provided the city planning commission, either by general rule or by making findings in the specific case, shall find the proposed use is fully appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use. Permitting such change, the city planning commission may require appropriate conditions and safeguards in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. Now, once the zoning ordinance, this is a special provision in our zoning ordinance, which allows the planning commission to make a determination on substituting one non-conforming use for another non-conforming use if you believe they are of the same intensity or the new use is of a lesser intensity than what is already there. You would be granting special exception approval, at which time the use no longer remains non-conforming. It becomes a legal conforming use in the district. That's exactly what the ordinance need. You have previously applied the same principles for the project on Albertson. If you remember Hillro Corporation, they came up with a couple of different uses. However, in case of that project, both the uses that were proposed were determined to be of a higher intensity than the use that already existed, which was industrial. So they were not approved. Now, the planning commission in this case will need to make a determination that the proposed professional office use is a lesser intensity than the previously existing tutoring center, or as the applicant presented before that, the psychiatrist's office. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the site itself, but, uh, some basic information is required, which the applicant does not need to order the basic old site plan that they have submitted. They can just submit it on a letterhead or a sheet of paper that is signed and notarized. He will attach that as part of the record. The total floor area of this building must be noted. You know how big this proposed professional offices. Parking calculations are one space for every three hundred square feet of gross floor area. Need to know the total square footage so we can calculate parking for this use and see if there is adequate parking. Uh, the site actually has its own parking lot in the back. I have an old site plan, which I'm going to share on my screen now and see some of it. Are you all able to see? This is the old site plan. So this is Woodward Avenue. There is a park on the west side. And there is a parking lot over here on the back of, this is the building. It's an old site plan. There is a parking lot on the back. Make sure that there is enough parking for the proposed office use. This is supposed to be a handicap accessible. Just need striped properly so that it meets PDA standards. Need to know the proposed hours of operation of the business, so we know what the anticipated site traffic is. Um, there is a sign along the front of the building over here, a small sign, so that we can need to clarify if we intend to reuse the sign. If they propose any changes to the facade of the building, it is an attractive looking um, residential looking structure. So if you're proposing any changes, we just need to know that. And finally, if any additional lights are going to be put. Since this is a commercial use, we will be requiring or reviewing it based on the requirements for commercial properties, which is lighting, architecture, all that, however, on a reduced. Now, the proposed use is an adaptive and it's a reasonable use of a building, which although is located in a single-family residential district, has got its own parking lot and it has also got a public parking lot further if you collect the site. There is a park here, there is a driveway that goes this way, and there is a bunch of public parking spaces here. Um, prior to moving to the next step, which would be to schedule a public hearing on this case, you would need to make a determination tonight and let the applicant know that you are agreeing to the interpretation based on those two sections of the zoning ordinance that I had referenced. While we always support the elimination of a non-conforming use, which is advocated by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and eventual use of every property conforming to the ordinance, in some cases, it is a gradual process. It doesn't go directly from a non-conforming use to a conforming use. Sometimes it's a slow step down and eventually gets where it's supposed to be. We believe the reuse of the property for an office rather than a tutoring center is moved towards that goal. So while the office use is not really a use permitted in a single-family residential district, it is definitely a lesser intensity use than a tutoring center, which would have vehicles dropping off students and picking them up. A tutoring center would be something like a Sylvan or a Comon or similar type of learning center would have parents dropping off their children, picking them up. The amount of traffic a tutoring center receives is way more than any regular professional office or a real estate office. So at this time, this project is before you for discussion tonight and to, if you are in agreement about the proposed use, lesser intensity, would go ahead and schedule it for public hearing and consideration of site plan and special exception approval at the next available. I would be happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Vidya. Uh, at this point, um, I just wanted to disclose, A Condominium Management Incorporated manages condominium complexes and I live in one and they manage it. I don't deal with Jason Carey, the owner. I actually deal with uh, Eric Major, who's one of his employees, but I just wanted everyone to know that. Um, so the floor is open to the commissioners. Um, what are your thoughts on this? Vidya, this has been here a long time. I assume this was built as a single-family residence, as was the, looks like a multiple next door to it. But how long ago did this happen? Obviously got approved.
A really long time ago, I'm guessing. And whenever it was, I wasn't able to dig up enough history, you know, if at all, it maybe has some information, but the very fact that if at all, it maybe has some information, but the very fact that they were allowed to build a parking lot means at some point of time they were really approved for a non-residential use on this property.
Yeah, it wouldn't happen, it wouldn't happen today, would it?
Yeah, I, I can tell you it's back in the seventies and it was a dental office to start with.
Okay. And the dentist, I assume owned it himself and practiced there?
Evidently.
And what happened next door? Is that a home that was broken into, uh?
Yes.
Or, okay. All right, so.
This Commissioner.
Sarah, go right ahead.
Yeah, this Commissioner Kang, I was just gonna say, I do recall it being a psychiatric office prior to the, the learning center. I think they've only been there for, um, a couple of years.
So it's several decades, though, that this was converted from a home, apparently.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
I'm sharing the aerial so the planning commission can see. This is the house. It's got a pretty good sized parking lot in the back that can be accessed by its own driveway. And next door is park and you have a bunch of public parking, so its location is well suited to, uh, it's reasonably suited to the use that they are proposing. It's not a house that is located in the middle of a neighborhood that's changing to a commercial use. It is located next to a high-traffic park driveway.
The, uh, the multiple next door, am I seeing it correctly? The parking for the multiple is accessed through the driveway for the, the home we're talking about?
Uh, not sure. Which is the multiple? This one?
Yes.
Okay, this parking lot, I do not believe connects to anything, but uh, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. All I see is a driveway coming back here to this parking lot. Now, if I were to go over here, see if I can.
Nick, I didn't get a chance to look at that. Is what I'm saying correct?
Yeah, no, I think actually they just park on the street. In the front, they don't have access to the rear yard.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you. Okay, other commissioners, uh, comments about, uh, this. It would, uh, by the way, if, if we approve, uh, going forward, it would go to a, a public hearing at an upcoming meeting. Uh, Vidya, does this have to be approved by the city council in the end or is it finished with the planning commission?
I believe it is the planning commission. The planning commission makes a determination of the use and, uh, to grant special exception and site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Gassen.
David, please.
Just a, a thought for consideration, um, a, as we look at non-conforming uses and, and we don't see a lot, or I haven't seen a lot on the planning commission, uh, with some, but not a lot. Um, and in the occasions of the past, when I've looked at that, it seemed to me the, the approach was at some point that non-conforming use is intended to change to conforming. And, um, Vidya, the planner mentioned that that could be a transition sort of process to get there. Um, but I have not seen that. It, in, I, I think we, my opinion is that we should try to when we end a non-conforming use, it should be towards conforming, not somewhat in between. So in my opinion, as we look at this particular request is gonna be, it should be residential, not something even lesser than non-conforming. I think it should just go to conforming, not lesser conforming. Unless I see some very strong um, reasoning, like the four neighbors to the east are all non-conforming also, but they're not. I don't see why we would consider continuing a non-conforming use when perhaps it could be converted to conforming. And that's not a
How would it be used then?
Solid opinion, but that's my initial thought.
How would the building then be used if, if it went to conforming?
Residential. And how would that happen? Convert that existing thing to residential or tear it down and build a new one? I, I don't know, but um, you know, as, as we're looking at master planning, maybe considering rezoning in some cases from that, maybe that area could change, but when I look at the neighboring properties being residential and this being potentially the only thing that's not, I don't see a strong reason to let it continue. That's an opinion, uh, and it's not a rock-solid opinion. It's just my initial thinking as I'm hearing this.
So, um, is the building immediately to the east also non-conforming, Vidya? Single family being used as a multiple?
This one, it is a single-family R1 district, so if this is a multiple family use, yes, it would be a non-conforming use.
And how about Nick? How about the next one? Are there three in a row here like this? Nick, are you still there? He may have wandered off. Okay, um, David, thank you. Uh, other comments from the commissioners?
I'm still here, Mr. Chris. I've, blame stopped in here.
What do we have along there? There's this building and then the, the next one is multiple.
Right, it's actually a duplex, right, which is non-conforming also.
And how about the third one? The next one over, is that?
That is, uh, I believe conforming.
Okay, so two of them here.
Yeah.
Got it, all right.
Yep. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this is Eric here. Quick question.
Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, question for Vidya. When I, if you zoom in on Street View on the sign in front of the um, the building there, it actually lists three, three addresses, 411, 413, and 415. So are there, would this be a single-tenant office use or is this a multi-tenant potentially, or what, what's the story there?
I think if you approve it as a professional office are not limiting whether it has to be one or whether it will be three offices. Because the parking is common to all professional office, one for 300, so might be a suite for just one person or it might be three offices for three different people. I, I do not know what the applicant or they're planning to, I mean, I do not know what the intent of the company that's buying it is.
Cause right now there's three addresses assigned to it, right?
Yeah.
Yep, that's what it looks like.
Does that indicate that it would be three separate tenants that currently occupy or, or, or last occupied that building? Why would there be three addresses?
Good question. Three addresses means three tenants. I wouldn't, I can see two different doors over right here. I don't know if a third tenant enters from the back and the back half of the building is out of the tenant's space. Maybe there were three tenants.
I, I think the owners of the building are here tonight. If you could ask them.
Yep.
Could I have the owners of the building identify themselves?
Mr. Chairman, I think their attorney, Mr. Gaber is here as well.
It's the Millers, I believe, or Mr. Gaber, yep.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, John Gaber on behalf of, uh, you know, Jason Carey and his business. Uh, the owners, the, the Millers are here, uh, and I believe they can speak to the uses and the historic uses of that particular property. Uh, Mr. Miller, can you give a little more indication as to what the uses were and how many uses there were on that property?
First of all, I'd like to state that it was never a residence. There is no cooking facilities or a kitchen. There is no shower or tub facilities for a residence. And to my knowledge, it was never lived in. It has been office building since the fifties when it was constructed. It has been office for a dentist, a chiropractor, and our particular business has been the learning center. And it has never been, uh, a residence.
The house next door is an apartment. It was built at the same time by the same dentist and it had three units, which it still has. And why they have three addresses, I don't know. That's a post, post office thing. I don't, I
But you never had three tenants in the building?
We've had a tenant in the lower level when we bought it and the tenant, of course, ourselves in the upper level. But, uh, they had, uh, addresses for the three locations prior to our owning it. And, uh, we left the numbers on the doors other than the fact that on the sign that has listed as three.
Okay.
There is another apartment building next door, uh, a couple of doors down. So on that block, there would be three non-conforming.
So three in a row are non-conforming?
No, they're not three in a row. There's a ours and the apartment next door and then one, uh, further down.
Okay.
Can I make a few statements, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Jen.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Um, as I said, I represent a condo management company. Jason Carey is the owner. He's, he's online with us as well. Um, this, just so we understand, for purposes of the ordinance, this is a real estate management services firm. It's been around for about 20 years. Uh, and what they do, you know, as, as the chairman mentioned, is that they manage homeowners associations, condominium associations, commercials and investment property. Um, they have a staff which essentially consists of property managers, bookkeepers and administrative assistants. Um, that staff, it is, right now it's about seven employees total. And, you know, they're there, you know, nine to five are the regular business hours. Uh, the, the employees are probably there longer. I, I would say probably eight to six is not uncommon. And they also work remote, so they're not always there on site. They're, they're often working remotely. So you've got a mix of, of, uh, you know, employee uses from that perspective. Now, the, uh, the prior uses, the, to, to Mr. Gassen's comment, um, the ordinance gives the, the owner of the property the ability to change uses, um, uh, to change non-conforming uses as a special exception. If the planning commission finds that, uh, the proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming uses. And as we've kind of gone over, the existing non-conforming uses, you've got the Learning Educational Center, which, which was a more intensive use because that required, uh, you know, students to be uh, to, if they were older, to either drive themselves or to be, uh, dropped off by their parents and such. So you had quite a few people going in and out of that particular office. Similarly, there, uh, was a, uh, I know there was a, I think it was a psychology office, not a psychiatry office. And it was, I surmise it was located in the basement, the lower level, because their, their logo and their, uh, their signage is still on the door on the backside to the lower level. And it was the Lighthouse Psychology Clinic. So I, I would think that that's a quasi-medical use as well, which is a more intensive use and has more people coming and going, uh, visiting the site, more traffic and such than, than our use would either. So basically you have, say, you know, seven employees. If they're all there at one time, you've got, you've got seven vehicles. Um, occasionally you get clients to, to visit the site, but that is not a frequent occurrence. That just happens occasionally. So there's not much visitor, customer, outside traffic as you would have with the prior uses being the learning center and the, uh, psychiatry office. So it is, we believe it is a more, or pardon me, a lesser intensive use from that standpoint. Um, and that, that's why we qualify under the ordinance for a special exception for, for our particular use. Now, getting into it a little further, um, a couple of the questions raised in, in the planner's report. Now, there will, we don't plan any facade change, no lighting changes. Um, we're going to, we plan on using the existing sign, not changing the frame, but changing the, uh, the face of the sign. Um, no landscaping changes. And, you know, we will certainly, uh, stripe the parking lot as has been requested uh, to be in compliance with the ordinance. Now, relative to parking, uh, you know, being totally upfront with, with the information that we have, um, the parking in back, there, there is a small driveway to the, to the property to the east of us, uh, to its back parking lot that, that traverses through our parking lot. It, it's a very small parking lot, if, as you would, uh, notice from the, uh, uh, from the aerial and there's, there's not much usage, but there is a, uh, uh, you know, they do traverse our site to, to get out to the road. So I wanted to make that known. Um, in terms of the questions about the, the size of the property and the amount of parking that's needed, um, I, I, I mentioned to you what, what our needs are, uh, with our employees and, you know, our, our client, uh, usage for that site. Uh, we believe that we can get about 10 parking spaces in the back, including the, the handy, requisite handicap parking space. There's also a street parking that hasn't been mentioned. There, uh, there's enough room for two or three spaces on the street in addition to the row of parking immediately to the west of us, the municipal parking. So there is ample parking on that site and, you know, we believe that, that our parking needs are going to be less than, you know, what the parking needs of the previous occupants of that site were. So therefore, you know, it's a less intensive use once again. Um, to answer your specific questions, the, the size of the building, Vidya, was 3,770 square feet approximately. And that's about 1885 on each floor. Uh, there's about 860 feet in the basement that's not usable. It, it's not finished. It's the mechanical rooms and the storage areas. But if you're looking at those parking requirements based on 300, uh, 300 square feet per space, that comes out on a gross basis to about 12 and a half parking spaces required. Uh, if you exclude the, the mechanical and the unfinished storage rooms, it's about 9.7 spaces. And as I mentioned, Jason believes that he can, he can put about 10 spaces back there in the parking lot in addition to the on-street and the adjacent municipal parking. So, you know, for these reasons, as I mentioned, we, we do think it's an appropriate transition with all due respect to, uh, to what Mr. Gassen said, uh, that maybe ideally from a, uh, you know, policy standpoint at some point in time, but, but that's not currently the way the ordinance is written. Um, and, and the ordinance is written that if we can show it's, it's an equally or more appropriate use than what was previously there, then, you know, our use should be permitted as a special exception type of use. So I would just throw that out there for, for your consideration. Um, Jason, I don't know if you have anything else to add to the, to the discussion from a factual standpoint about your business operation, uh, if you wanted to. I know you're muted now. Okay, apparently not, um, unless he gets unmuted, but you, you know, that's why we're coming in front of you today to, to, you know, put this property back into productive use. Uh, productive use, it's a less intensive use, a professional business office type of use. And we think that the, you know, any intrusiveness to the, to that area and the neighborhood is, is going to be very minimal, if any. So we believe that, uh, this is, you know, a very good use for this particular site. There's Jason. Jason, do you have anything else to add?
No, thank you very much. Um, Danny done an excellent job of reviewing, you know, you know, our, our use and, and Ms. Christian a, as well. So, no, I, I think we've covered everything. Thank you.
So I guess we'll answer any questions that the, uh, planning commission may have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gaber. Questions for, uh, the, the petitioner and the owner? Um, hearing that, I'm just gonna say, I, you know, it's been there forever. Uh, it's one of those anomalies that one encounters in an old city. Uh, things happen in the past, uh, who knows? If it was a village council, city council, planning commission, it got approved and it sounds like it's been operating this way for perhaps as long as 50, 60 years. And, um, I guess I sort of agree with Mr. Gaber. We're moving forward within the law. I'd sure like to see it reused, um. With all respect, Mr. Gassen, I, I can't imagine tearing it down and building a home there. Um, I, I just can't see that happening and it looks like a good use. It looks like a low-intensity use and, uh, that would be my two cents.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Gassen. Just a follow-up comment. I appreciate, um, and get the comments from Mr. Gaber and I kind of realign some of my thinking, so I appreciate that and, uh, as well as your comment.
Thank you, sir.
This is, uh, Commissioner Kang. Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you. Um, I live right by there. It's a very well-cared-for This is Commissioner Kang. Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you. I live right by there. It's a very well cared for building. Currently doesn't have a lot of traffic. I don't see how this would, you know, increase that much. You look at the surrounding areas and, you know, you've got the baseball fields, you've got Mr. Sees. I don't think it's as desirable to put a residential home right there. And I don't think it makes sense to take such a beautiful building and, you know, force a conversion or a tear down, you know, which is one thing we haven't been wanting to see as much of or, you know, hesitant to do. So I, I'm, I think it's a very nice building, and I think that the use, you know, can be easily supported.
I should have mentioned in my comments that Woodward is a collector, wrote. We've heard that before this year, but it's not a residential street. It's classified as a collector. Vidia?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important for the board to make note that Mr. Gaber, as the owners clarified, this structure does not have a kitchen and a bathroom. So technically, it does not meet the definition of a dwelling unit per our zoning ordinance. This is not a residential building. I was not aware of the fact that we stated it tonight at the meeting that there's no kitchen and no full bath. That is what defines a dwelling unit. Without cooking facilities, it's not a dwelling. It's actually just a building. So
Probably built as a commercial building.
Exactly. It was built as a legal conforming use at some point of time because they wouldn't have gotten building code approval for a dwelling without a kitchen or a full bath. So it was built at some point of time legally as a commercial use. Zoning came afterwards, made this area residential. They're just wanting to continue it. The structure does have a residential appearance, and when we compare the, yes, in an ideal world, it would be a residential unit, but without a kitchen, the amount of retrofitting required for a structure that exists from nineteen fifty would actually probably require a full tear down of the structure, which does not seem reasonable considering it is an attractive looking structure. So the proposed use, at least I believe, based on the applicant's description of what they are planning, is definitely a step down in a use as a tutoring center or as a psychology office. So I, with the information presented here today, I'm more comfortable in stating that proceeding with the use as proposed is a reasonable use for this property.
Mr. Vice Chair might have to take over?
Yes, I think we lost him.
Oh, did we lose him?
Yes, I think we did.
Well, I think we've talked this one enough. I think we're, I think we're ready for a motion. Or what do, I guess, Vidia, what are we looking for tonight?
You are placing it for a public hearing and consideration of site plan and special exception approval at your next available agenda. Sienna and Nick will determine which agenda that is.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion that Vidia said.
Sounds good.
Does that work?
Looks great.
Your support?
For.
Very good. Roll call.
King? Approve. Yes. Vakwa?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Bixson? Bixson?
Yes, sir.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Gaston?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
McGee? Think he'd be a yes.
Mr. Vice Chairman, can I ask one question, please? Vidia mentioned for site plan approval and special exception approval, since we're not proposing to, for any site plan improvements, do we need to submit a, an actual site plan? Or would the letter that she mentioned, that's the statement that's signed and notarized about those points suffice for that purpose?
That, that would suffice, Mr. Gaber. It's just that special exception cannot be granted with a site plan in tandem. So whatever drawings you submitted, attach a no price letter with it, and that would suffice as your complete plan.
Thank you.
All right.
May I just ask clarifying question? That would include, though, the layout of the parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, can I ask a question too for Vidia? I, I know sometimes those parking lots by the softball field or baseball field are, are completely full a lot of times. So it's, I guess, for the the count of the parking spaces, is that not going to include those spots?
No, public parking is available is a different thing than being used for providing required parking. The site requires ten parking, those ten parking spots be on the site.
That's what I thought, but I just, the way they, when, in the presentation, they talked about those spots.
If they have an influx of customers, they're welcome to park in the public lot, but they have to provide the spaces that are required by the ordinance on the apartment.
Thank you.
All right, so motion passes for, to be scheduled at our next public hearing.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Hi, Eric. I think I'm back again.
There you are.
There I am. On my phone this time, on my phone. I think I heard the end of that. You passed a motion to schedule for the next meeting as a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're down to number eleven, or number eight miscellaneous. And the wonders of modern technology. I'm, I'm calling in remotely, remote, and I'm afraid the internet went down. Any other, any miscellaneous items?
Um, Dennis, I actually have an item slash comment, I guess. I would like to address the drawings for Gateway. I know they were different from your packet. Every so often, we get people who, they get Vidia's review letter, then they want to change things based on that letter usually a week prior, and then try to rush it. So I always state, okay, well, the packets have already gone out. So then, at the meeting, that's when they present items that are different from the packet for you guys. It hasn't happened in quite some time, but I did want to voice that, that is what took place tonight.
We're not at all surprised. It's very clear that they're, they're scrambling a bit here at the end, trying to hold this thing all together and
Yes, so, you know, you know, even when they do get items, I do state to them that it's already been in the packet. They're more than welcome to bring them. However, in that situation, I just wanted to let it be known that that is what took place tonight.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the comment. Any other miscellaneous items from the commissioners? Then public comment, Vidia, anyone on hold? Anyone called in, emailed, anything for us tonight?
No, they have not.
Hey, very good. Uh, let's see, upcoming gen, upcoming agenda items, number ten.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, February first, there will be a consideration of a site plan and special project for the proposed multifamily project to be located at two ten diversion. I will state that I did speak with Roger, who is the architect and owner for that project. He stated that he would be submitting his documents for that project on Friday. Obviously, that will be to be determined if he actually is. If not, there will be the public hearing for the four eleven Woodward that just passed. We do not have a second meeting in January. The next meeting will be February first.
Very good. Please remind the, the gentleman from two ten diversion to make sure that his packet is complete.
Certainly.
Thank you, thank you very much. Hey, any other, any other information or items for the consideration of the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, just one. It's Nick. Mr. Randy Azel had submitted the development agreement for the the multiple family project on First Street. It's been reviewed by the attorneys. A draft has been sent to city council. We have a scheduled discussion item on, I think it's the twenty-seventh of January, that meeting. Is it twenty-fifth? I'm sorry, the twenty-fifth of January. At that time, the developer will make his presentation. If the mayor and council would like, we will set a public hearing then for the end of February. All the public has plenty of time to weigh in. Let them all know. In case you're interested, that's, that's the timetable that we're looking at at this point. And then, secondly, I know, Mr. Chairman, you had asked me about if there was a development agreement that went along with Mr. Schneider's property over on Main Street. And I, I looked up back in the minutes, and it wasn't a development agreement. We were looking for a number of that restitution number again that Mr. Vakwa had brought up about, hey, if the guy starts and doesn't finish it, what's the bond money that has to be put up to take that building and put the site back to the basic ground, if you will. They're, they're working on that still. They have not got permits yet. So there's not really a development agreement. There's just a straight site plan. We will, I'll get you that number when we get that in the next coming week. I didn't forget about that. I just, I followed up on it.
Thank you very much. Any other news for us, Nick?
That, oh, I, I will tell you something exciting. In the times of, a lot of cities are watching occupancy rates crash, not knowing who's going to come back and reopen, today, a gentleman, that's a former GM exec, Christie and I met with him a year and a half ago. And he took, had signed a lease, and we didn't know what was going to happen, but at the, at the Three Dog Bakery on Main Street. He secured a franchise out of Barberton, I'm sorry, Fort Lauderdale, Florida for a macaroni shot.
Oh, yes. You, you told me about this.
I remember telling you guys, yes. So he called today and said, I've actually been paying rent for eight months. I got my financing. I submitted my building permits today. I am going to open. I think that's really good news. In times, you know, like this, a guy's putting his own money up. He's going to run the shop, open in the next month or so on Main Street. So bravo to him. Well, I told him, we'll all support him. Well, I'll probably gain a few pounds, but that's okay because it's really good product.
I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with macaroons. There's one in Florida, unfortunately, where I usually go and once, once you go, you will go back.
That is the exact same franchise. So that's great.
Yep, very good. Thank you for the update. Anything else for the commission?
Yes.
Christian?
Just real quick. Hey, Nick, any update on that Spartan Inn issue? I know you, last time you mentioned there was a couple of people interested. Any updates on that?
Yes, so both of them, the owner actually called me and said, both people have been working with him, one a little heavier than the other. And we were trying to come up with, what's the process there? And again, to Mr. Gaston's point, in the real world, great to take it down, rebuild, make it conforming. Instead of, you know, the conversion. But at this point, the two that are working or coming to me are, again, looking for the venue. It would probably have to be a conditional rezoning to allow first and second floor apartments, knocking from forty to thirty units, gussy it up a bit, and we'll make that decision together. That's a good master plan discussion item, but obviously, that's a troubled spot in our town. The owner knows that. He's not proud of it. He, he has a hard time with the clients there. And he said, if these two guys walk away, I might do this myself. I said, that's great. We would appreciate affordable housing, walking distance to town, not a motel.
Yeah, especially aged motel.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Christian, is that good enough?
That's perfect enough. Thank you very much.
And the Big Bright Lights show is staying on till the end of January.
Who is?
The Big Bright Lights are going to stand and try to make people feel good for, till the end of January.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, thank the mayor and DDA for that one. They, they came up with that. That was truly appreciated.
Very good. Very good. Is that separately metered?
Uh, it is. And yes, it is. They have separate. And it's really inexpensive. It's like five thousand, I think, for the whole season. It's crazy.
Because you have LED lights, I would imagine.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. It's amazingly low.
That's, that's good to know. Okay, absent any other discussion, we will consider this meeting adjourned. And wish you all to stay safe and healthy, and we'll see you in February.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight.
Night.